Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, June 21st. Call to order at 6:32 PM. First topic is discussion regarding counter response to COVID-19. We have our updated case counts and then we have the freshest one that just came in.
I didn't pull mine, so Jake, could you give me the call?
Absolutely. So going back to week of 6 through the 12th, there was no, there was
Two.
There was two. Oh, now it finally opened. I'm sorry. The week before is what I was looking for. Sorry. May 30th through June 5th, there was none. 6 through the 12th, there was two. And then again, 13th through 19th, there was two. So still relatively low. You're welcome. Anything else on COVID-19?
I have nothing.
None.
You all saw that the county has another round of testing information that we're putting out to the residents.
Yes. So we'll put that out. FurCog's putting that out, et cetera, right? Okay. Discussion regarding the trash disposal agreement.
So where we left off with that topic, there was a question about whether our hauling contract needed any other considerations in terms of changing the location. I've heard back from them. There's no concern from their end about changing the disposal site from Agua into Springfield.
Okay.
And then the second question was on the insurance requirement that was in the conditions of the contract that Republic presented to all the towns. As we noted then, there was a question posed to our insurance company and they have responded as anticipated that that's an unusual request and that we should push back on that. And I believe all the other towns who were presented with the same agreement have done the same thing. So while I had hoped that they would respond with a revised version of their agreement by today, they have not. So the guidance that have been given from the district at this point is for each of the towns to sign the agreement with that stricken. And so the draft that you have has that removed. And submitted as is and with the anticipation that they will countersign. They've been made aware of this issue. They just haven't responded back with a clean draft of anything, so.
Questions or concerns?
No.
I have none.
Am I proposing a one year only because that will align with the end of the three-year term that you have with your hauling contract?
Would you like a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we enter into a one-year contract with between Town of Irving and Republic Services disposal agreement with a contract effective date July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 for disposal of regular waste.
Second.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Sure can.
As presented with section
Ah, yes, you call it out.
Section eight stricken.
Yep.
Would you second that amendment?
Second the amendment.
Thank you. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item of business is review of the renewal agreement for the co-responder clinician services with clinical support options and the intermunicipal agreement. Chief Holst, if you want to join us, you're welcome to. Follow with other topics of yours. Related to you and your department. So we were waiting on some language, to verify some language.
For the co-responder grant?
Correct.
No. Sorry. You all at your last meeting approved the 30-day because DMH was prepared to start in the month of June?
Correct.
That in front of you is the extension through the next fiscal year.
And off the top of my head, I'm not recalling why, but I thought there was some language in there that we discussed wanting some clarity on, which is why we didn't sign for 13 months.
On the DMH grant?
Maybe I'm not recollecting correctly.
I don't recall that.
No? Okay. Alright. I don't recall why we only did 30 days then.
I spent a lot of time rewatching the last meeting. I don't recall that.
DMH had presented it to us that you already have your clinician in place. We can give you a one month. We were prepared to start the program July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 23. And they came and said, well, we have, we can do a month. So that's why we asked for just the one month.
I'm probably mixing it up with something else. I just, yeah, don't worry about it. I'll do.
It's possible you're referring to the actual intermunicipal agreement and there was some wordsmithing that you all have.
Yes, yes. I think because I'm mixing it because of the topic.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
You're right, you're right. They only presented us with a 30-day. That was DMH is setting the term.
And so when you went to do the intermunicipal agreement and the agreement with CSO, you only did the 30 dates so that the two dates aligned?
Yep.
This is the contract to do all of the next fiscal year? And then we can come back to you with a renewal agreement on that, the actual service agreement? And you can give that a term that aligns with this.
Right. Okay. And yes, you're both correct. It was the intermunicipal that I'm, that I'm thinking about, not the DMH grant. Nothing different than what we approved last
Correct.
time except the term, right? So I'm on the amount.
Yeah, correct.
Any questions or concerns?
None.
None.
Could I get a motion?
Make a motion that we enter into an agreement between the Department of Mental Health related to the jail or arrest diversion program effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, in a total not to exceed $198,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll skip down to discussion regarding hiring of patrol officers. So we had discussed appointing Officer Gordon to a full-time position and pending the regular pre-employment checks as well as completion and negotiations. During that time, Brian summarized some of it here. We Chief Brian and I spoke with the union regarding the candidate and that obviously with their experience, we would be looking to offer them something more appropriate than our normal, you know, much lower step hiring band where we've operated because of the candidates we've had. Their response was that they supported and had no concerns with any decision the board made within grade P2 in terms of an offer. And seemed to indicate that they agreed that the experience lended to the upper half, at least of it as well. And I think Chief and I, you know, in discussions kind of in the same place. So at this point, rather than we haven't not had any discussions directly with Officer Gordon with a number. Obviously, that's something the board needed to come back and come to. So I wanted to kind of give that summary. We did some of the background, made sure that, you know, everything's everyone's aligned, I guess, on where we started last meeting, which was that obviously this should be at a higher step than than we normally hire at. And all pre-employment testing and screening has been completed and satisfactory. So with that, I guess I look to both you gentlemen, if you have a thought as to where you want to make the offer of employment at in terms of step? And it would be in the July 1, 2022 table because that's the start date.
Do you have at hand for 31 years of training and experience? Certificates and educational background?
I did not bring that up, Bill. I wasn't prepared. I brought that last week. I don't know if you recall, but I know that she holds a bachelor's degree. I know that she's got 31 years on the job. I know from reading her resume and so forth. She had a couple of years as an interim sergeant. She had a couple of years as a detective. She did a lot with the community policing. Several certificates in DARE, you know, community orientated, things like that. So I don't have it with me right now.
But you have seen
I have seen it.
all those supporting documents?
Correct. And I know that she has a bachelor's degree. I'm not sure from what college though. I don't recall what college. But I've seen the certificate.
Can can you tell me what, what pay scale grade in that sergeant is at currently?
P3, step four. He's going to be going to step five, July 1 of 2022. On the new, on the new scale.
So he'll be at 2981.
I don't have the scale in front of me, so yeah, that's okay. I, yep. 29, 2980, yep.
The reason for my questions is, is one, I want to be fair to the officer and also want to be fair to the sergeant. I don't want to put it in a situation where the, where that, where the officer is equivalent or makes more than, than our sergeant. That's one of my concerns.
Okay.
Although after 30 years in law enforcement, I have seen patrolmen pay outright sergeants. And so that's not, I know it's not uncommon, but it is a concern.
Bill, did you have a step that you were looking at? The letter you would recommend is step seven?
I would recommend nothing lower than step seven, Mr. Bassrush.
Based on your earlier questions, Bill, even a maxed out steps 15 according to the July 1
Right.
is a hair less than a step five sergeant.
Right.
And theoretically, unless other changes were made for any reason to the tables, the sergeant would continue to increase in the following year and
Correct.
the patrol officer would not.
Correct.
So the gap would increase over time, I guess is what I'm getting at. I'll ask the question and I know we have multiple positions to fill, you know, obviously at this point, but the fiscal year hasn't started yet. So hopefully we are on a road to doing that very soon. So budget-wise, we're not necessarily we may have to go back to town to make an adjustment depending on where this officer started at in terms of wage because that was not in the budget plan that, you know, in February, et cetera, right?
That's correct. It was budgeted at, I think we were step two, three, you know? And that's the level of training that we had, where we had officers that were still waiting to go to the academy. And so we couldn't have predicted us step eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
Yeah, because we budget for a one to three normal. It was kind of where we've always been historically. So just as a note that that may be something we need to do depending.
So I'm gonna recommend a grade, grade P2. And I'm going to say a step go well above the step seven and go to a step 14. I would like to compensate her for 31 years of service, but this, this for a one-year term employment. And I can't see doing that currently. So if there's going to be further discussion, I'd like to at least start there at a grade 14, at step 14.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Sluckman, Benbury. And I would like to say, I mean, I do understand the situation that we're in. It may be a year. She's been very open and upfront about that. I hope to keep her longer. But I do appreciate that.
You said 14? Really? I want to make sure I heard you right.
Yes.
Patrol rate of 2903, $29.03 is the 14 on July 1, correct? That's what you're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's right in the ballpark of where I was thinking too, so I have no concerns with that.
I don't either and, you know, it's a rare opportunity regardless of how long she, you know, assuming she accepts that she stays with us to have someone with that kind of experience to be with us, so.
I agree.
And I defer to my fellow select board members' experience in law enforcement, et cetera, to, you know, help guide the discussion. I don't have any concerns either with, with offering that. So I think the union, the chief, you know, in discussions, I think everyone was leaning towards the top end of the scale. So it seems to align well with that. And acknowledging that, you know, while we may want to do even more if we could, that we also need to be cognizant of the budget and, you know, the taxpayers and try to find balance there. And unfortunately, it may not be at the level that, that she's had as compensation in Greenfield, but it's pretty about the best we can do. We're pretty close to for Irving, right?
I think that's generous, gentlemen. And just the conversation that I have had with her. I think she'll be happy with that. I can't foresee her not.
Well, there's a level of interest and commitment in it, getting this far without an offer yet. She's done the work and been, you know, engaged too, so hopefully.
And she's been amazing. I've asked her to get her appointments and bang, 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 bang. She's been right on it, so.
Excellent. So I don't have any concerns unless there's other discussion. Would one of you like to make the motion?
Sure. I'll make them, it's Laura Gordon.
Correct.
Make a motion that we appoint Laura Gordon as a full-time benefited patrol officer in accordance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 133 for a term of one year pending successful completion of a pre-employment query, driving history check, health exam and drug screen and psychological examination with a rate of pay with grade two, step 14.
And a start date?
Start date of July 1st, 2022.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for all the work, getting this opportunity in front of us.
Can I stay input?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you also brought a recommendation for a part-time officer?
That's correct. I had recent conversations with a, and I spoke with him, so he knows that we're going to discuss his name tonight. William Kimball. He's a career firefighter in Greenfield. He also works part-time police department, Norfield and in Gill. And he approached me because currently he's going to be taking a position in Norfield that's I don't know the details of it, but it's going to a full-time officer or if they're doing away with a position over there. I don't know all the details. But he indicated that he would be available for some shift coverage for us. I have worked with Mr. Kimball on calls. We've responded to calls together, very familiar with him. He's also helped us out with a lot of technical things, IMC, our radios, helping us build cruisers, our light packages and things like that. So he brings a variety of technical aspect of policing that would be beneficial to me to to have him on staff in addition to his, his ability to handle himself on calls and his experience there, so.
Excellent.
Is he, and maybe I missed it in there, full-time certified?
He is part-time certified, but he is, his last name is Kimball, so he'll be in the next round of Bridge Academy. And he has full intentions on participating and completing that. And if we can assist him in that process too.
I didn't remember the letter cut off and I knew K was close.
A through H was the first round.
Okay.
So he'll be in this second round.
Understood. Any questions, concerns?
I have no concerns.
Happy to see that we have some people with some experience interested.
Absolutely.
So would he be willing to start? When, how soon can he?
So what I'm hoping to do, Sluckman, Benbury, is July 1. Maybe now we can get his psychological, physical. You know, he'll go through that process, psychological, physical and a background. But I would like to start that first thing in July when the new budget takes off. And so I'm hoping that, you know, if everything goes smoothly, we'd be looking at having all those results and everything back. So maybe a start date of August or sooner. That gives us the month of July to to get his appointments taken care of.
Start date of August 1st?
Yeah, earlier, yeah.
Or sooner, yeah. You know, if we get all his results back by the end of, middle of July or end of July, he could start training and I don't, I don't foresee there being an extensive training. Like I said, he's already working in Gill and Norfield, so he learn our, you know, our department, our town, and he'll be ready to start, so.
So I'll make a motion to appoint William Kimball as a part-time patrol officer, working up to 19.5 hours per week in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 133, for a term of one year pending successful completion of pre-employment query, driving history check, health exam and drug screen and psychological examination at a rate of grade P2, step one, and to start August 1st or sooner.
Excellent. Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just the continued employment is based on completing the Bridge Academy?
Did you catch that? Would you like to amend that to include?
I would amend that to completion of Bridge Academy.
Required for continued employment?
For continued employment.
I will second the friendly amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Excellent. And then since we're on your topics, we'll jump down to review of the police cruiser procurement. So, no, go ahead. I was gonna say a recommendation is to continue with the hybrid cruisers, the Ford hybrid police interceptor SUVs. And through MHQ where we've gotten them prior.
That's correct.
At this point, are we expecting at best 2023? Sometime in 2023? I mean, is that, is that kind of where, where everything's landing?
We're probably looking at after the first of the year, maybe early spring. I'm hopeful.
Any questions or concerns from anyone? And you're comfortable with the specifications, obviously?
Yeah, they're pretty straightforward. They're basically what we get every few years.
Will we be transferring electronics to this vehicle from somewhere else or purchasing it?
Purchasing, purchasing it, no. And that has all, all the, all the equipment needed is in that.
So this has all the outfitting and everything?
Correct.
Except decals?
Nope, has the decals. Paint, decals.
So the
And the watch guard because we
Is not in it?
It's not, but we have
The other
We still have to get that, yep.
Yep.
But that one comes with the additional. But that one does have what I'm going to do because we don't know how long it's going to take to get the watch guard. So what I am going to do is in that one, there is a transfer fee from the unmarked to take the watch guard out of that one and to put so to your point, Bill, that will be transferred from the unmarked into that new one. So that way it is equipped because it's going to be a patrol car. We'll be equipped with it. And then when we get the, all the watch guard for the new stuff, everything will be replaced to include the unmarked getting watch guard again.
So if it comes first, that'll come off of this. If watch guard arrives first?
Yes, if there's no transfer, yes, correct. I think the transfer fee was, I don't know, a couple hundred bucks. So yes, that
Looked like five or six.
Okay, yep.
Just as a side note, when we do the watch guard procurement here shortly, we should have that discussion with them about the fifth cruiser not necessarily being here when they're installing the rest and what does that change, if anything? Just as a piece of that. I don't know who will get here first, but
Our luck, they'll come at the same time, right?
I'm glad you have that optimism, sir. Any questions or concerns on it? Good to move forward?
Yep.
One of you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to award procurement for the Ford utility police interceptor to MHQ of Marlboro, Massachusetts, 01752 in the amount of $57,401.07. And authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep, I'll come see ya. As always, gentlemen, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. All right, jumping back up to the top, amend order of public layout description of Poplar Mountain Road dated March 28th, 2022. So you probably recall in our last discussion, we we ordered the layout after the amendment at the annual town meeting, correcting a missing mark, if you will, on the boundaries of said road. And Scott, I believe you noted that sequentially there was a number missing, again, still, or another number that was not identified in the dozens of reviews prior. Fast forward to now, and I believe we have spoke with general counsel about what is necessary to make that adjustment. Do we have to start, basically effectively start over, order it again, and then go to the go to a special town meeting to have it, you know, approved again? So the feedback, if I followed it, which was just last minute, there, because it's effectively a clerker, there may be a revision filing that we can do with a clerk and file it as is and then file a revision as opposed to bringing it all back for what is essentially a, a missing, you know, sentence in the overall bounds that are the intent was clear, right? There's no question of what the intent or goal of any of our actions.
The plan is accurate that was filed. They had all the marks. It was just a transfer from reading that to,
Correct.
You know, transferring it onto paper. It was omitted.
So we've ordered it. It's been approved at town meeting. We have 30 days to file it from when we ordered it. Ordered the layout, which was two weeks ago. So I guess effectively there'd be no action as long as both of you are okay with that. If the council comes back and says that is, you know, an option. And so we would move forward and get that filed before our next meeting. Well, except tomorrow, but before our next meeting, following tomorrow. If you're both okay with that.
I'm okay.
And if that isn't able to be done, then we'll, we'll bring it back amended.
I'm fine.
Sounds good.
Meeting minutes, June 14th, 2021. Understood. We'll pass over those. Meeting minutes, June 6th, 2022.
Make a motion, we accept meeting minutes of Monday, June 6th, 2022, as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
So before we go on to the next topic, I believe we may have a question or comment around the International Paper Mill? RFP, is that correct? We don't have it on our agenda, but if you wanted to say something?
Well, I would like to share some thoughts with you on that issue, if that's okay. It might take a few minutes. So I don't want to hold up your very important business, if you don't mind listening to what I can say.
Possible to take care of Glenn's items and then?
I'm good.
You sure?
Okay.
I don't have any sense.
Yeah, I mean, you know, is that 10, 15 minutes or less?
10 minutes max.
Okay, excellent. If you'd like to come on up?
My name is Edward Hines. I'm a resident of Wendell. My wife and I own what was the Wendell Congregational Parsonage. It's part of the Congregational Church. So they sold it in 1941. I'm also a former employee of the town. I taught for 27 years at the elementary school. I taught our children music. And it was a great job. I loved it. I loved the children. I loved the town. And I wanted to talk with you and want to share some thoughts regarding the IP mill. There are, there are two things that inspired me to come here tonight. The first one was the recent unfortunate events in Orange. That sort of said, okay, time to say something. The mill is something I have looked over my left shoulder at going up the, going up the hill for 30 years. But there's another reason I'm here, and it's one that you might find intriguing. It involves the lot next to the Mill Lot. Mill is, on the town map, would be Lot 32. The 43 acres that goes along the river and has the 1902 construction on it. But Lot 35 is that triangular piece of land, about an acre and a half, that is tucked between Paper Mill Road and Paper Mill Road. Those used to be Irving Street and maybe Montague Street, something like that, back in the day. That piece of land is one I have been studying now for six months. And here's why. Our home will be celebrating its bicentennial next year. It's going to be 200 years old. And in preparation for that, I designed a website on the history of the house and as well as a website on the history of the town. Basically, I went around doing searches in newspapers, genealogical sites, you know, the whole story, collecting information on Wendell and in particular on the house. So in one of the searches, I came across the name Cook, C-O-O-K-E, Mrs. Cook. And Mrs. Cook was a poet and an author who was born in 1816 and died in 1897. She was born in Plainfield. And she probably was self-educated as a writer. But she was published as a 15-year-old in the Daily Hampshire Gazette for the first time. And she went on to have a lot of her work published while she was alive. In 1841, she married a medical doctor who had just graduated from Harvard. He was from Amherst, and his name was Lucius Cook. So Fidelia Hayward from Plainfield married Lucius Cook from Amherst, and they settled in Wendell. Dr. Cook became the town local doctor, but he was also a surgeon. And Dr. Cook also was interested in real estate and the law. He was better at medical, he was a better medical doctor than he was a lawyer. In fact, in the 1877 history of Franklin County, they refer to Dr. Cook as somewhat of a petty father at the law, a shiloh at the law. So, so I've been studying what this guy was up to and, and doing research on his acquisitions and tracing land histories and things like that. This is what I've been doing for six months. Well, they moved to Wendell in 1841. They lived here in, in town till 1855. It's a good chance they visited my home. Because the only way to get to Greenfield was to go down Montague Road and pass the parsonage. So it's a good chance they stopped in there and visited the Reverend Dickinson on occasion. It's a good chance of it. The parsonage was a place where people came as church members in addition to the, the meeting house. So in 1855, they bought a piece of land in Grouse Corner and moved there. And it's that lot that I'm referring to, that triangular piece, one and a half acres. And they built a house there. And the house was built up a little bit on the hill so that it wouldn't be prone to flooding. In addition to that, they built a shed and they built a barn. The shed, I'm pretty sure I've got this right, the shed was located just off the point where you have the Hairpin Turn on Paper Mill Road. So they lived there in 1855, and then Dr. Cook died in 1858. And Fidelia, his wife, was made executrix? I don't know if that's the right pronunciation. Executor, female version executrix of the estate. And she had to declare bankruptcy in order to pay his bills, to pay his debts. And, and she managed to pay them off and hold on to some of the land that he had purchased over the years. And she buried him on that site. And that is one of the big reasons I'm here right now. Because when I started doing research on Fidelia and looking for her works, which by the way, I'm up to 150 works in the, in the collection. And I probably am the only person alive who has all of her, I think I have all of it. I mean, I've been doing research on her prose and on her poetry, and I've, I've got a lot, a lot of material. Anyway, so she, she buried him there. And and she attempted to sell the property in 1859, 1860, and then the war came in 1861. And she became editor, the literary editor at the Springfield Republican. She was admired by the, by Mr. Bowles, I think his name was, who was the publisher at the time. And she was hired as, first she was an assistant, 1860, and then in 1861 she was made the literary editor. And at that time, she was publishing and helping to publish the works of someone by the name of Emily Dickinson. And it was through the Springfield Republican that Emily Dickinson became very well-known. So Fidelia Cook has a place in history that most people know nothing about. So she buried him on the site, and she tried to sell the land in 1860, 1861, and she was unsuccessful. She finally sold it to Ivors Benjamin, who was born in Wendell and I think was a friend of the family, from what I can gather in the records. She sold it to him in 1867 with two provisions. One was that she, that the buyer, Benjamins, could retain the right of way to water, to the water source, which was a spring right off of Prospect Street, and it's still there. And the other was she reserved the right to a 20 by 20 plot where her husband was buried so that she could maintain it. I can't find him. I have been to every genealogical site, every grave searching site. I've done extensive research on the history, the transaction history of that lot. And I cannot find any evidence that someone attempted to address that 20 by 20 plot. Because if you wanted to move a body, you'd have to go through the proper procedures to do that. And that would include some recorded document in the deeds office that would indicate that this land was now being modified in some way. So there is a Lucius Cook buried in Hadley, but it's a different one. So I'm here to see if somebody can, maybe somebody knows something that I don't know or can provide some information that I have missed along the way. But there's a, there's a good possibility that Lucius Cook is still on that land and buried there. Now, there would be every reason for someone to want to topple over this guy's gravestone or even throw it in the Millers River, you know? He was, he was not trusted as a lawyer, but that was his first love, was buying and selling real estate and being Judge Cook. So, so that's the reason I'm here. On the IP issue, I remember 20 years ago when the town took it over. I remember 30 years ago when it was still, I think it was still in operation 30 years ago. And now it's vacant and vulnerable. That's my big concern. As we all know, it's going to be at least $4 million in Orange to take care of the mess. And I think, at least in my opinion, it's time to take steps towards taking that building down. Now, as I see it, there are companies out there who specialize in renewal or retrieving old materials and reusing them. And this is an opportunity to do just that. Bricks can be sold. In fact, they get a good price, old bricks, as well as the timbers inside that building. I don't know how much copper is left. I suspect there's not any. But there is some value in that building in terms of taking it down and reselling the the material. In terms of the 43 acres, I think some creative thinking is, is warranted to try and not do urban renewal on that piece of land, but rural renewal. Because as far as I'm concerned, that's the most beautiful view of the Millers River anywhere. In fact, it's the same view the Cooks had back in 1855, before the mill was there. And that piece of land could be developed very nicely into, say, using a, a model of the Zor Outdoor Model where recreational activities could, could occur on there, could be a river walk. Could be all kinds of nature conservancy, conservancy kinds of things going on there. Could even be cross-country skiing on that, on that land. It's a lot of land. And it could be put to good use, and it could also revitalize that Grouse Corner area, Millers Falls, which is really, on the every side, that's part of it. So that's my two cents on, on the matter. You know, and I don't expect anyone to necessarily agree with what I have to say, but I think what's been going on lately brings it all into focus. And, and, you know, thanks for your time, and I hope you'll, hope you'll help me out on that, where is Lucius Cook buried story? Because I can't find the guy. And I'm, I'm sure he's, you know, I'm convinced he's still there.
I received your public records request, so we'll be working on that in the coming week.
I beg your pardon?
So I received your public records request?
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, yeah. In the public records, I don't know, I don't know what, do you know what the regs are on that? How long you have to hold on to those, those records?
If it's vital, it's permanent. So if we do have a death certificate dating back to the 1870s?
He died in 1858.
Okay.
What I'm interested in is any lot maps that might have the structures on there.
We may not have all of those. It depends because that at the time would have been, most of that area in Irving Side would have been developed by the mill. Many of those maps about parcel ownership existed in the Mills mapping office. And then when the town took over, much of that around the turn of the century.
Right.
Then it became our property. So if something happened before then, we may not have that level of detail. There's always a chance that they're recorded at the registry, but
Nothing there.
The assessing office has a lot of the hard-to-find maps. We've had some surveyors over the decades who have, as they've closed their practices, have sold their maps.
To the guy in Greenfield, yeah.
And so, so when our assessor's in the office, we're going to go through the mapping.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'd like to solve this mystery. And, and I hope a book comes out of this eventually. There's enough material there for it. And the Lucius Cook story certainly would add some spice to, to the whole thing. But right now, my question, my big question is, where is he buried? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Fascinating. Sure will. I want to know now. Where is he buried? And appreciate your thoughts on the IP mill. We're continuing that discussion. And I think we all share your concerns after seeing, you know, similar things happen to our neighbors and supporting them during that. And obviously, our own experiences with the Usher Mill and having to clean up that site already from the same kind of situation, unfortunately.
And I remember the Usher Mill discussions many, many years ago about making that into a school. And I remember the Usher Mill discussions many, many years ago about making that into a school. When Mr. Houghton was, was still with us. Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCray. Would you like to come up and we'll get on to your topics?
I can't talk that.
No, you cannot, but you can try.
He didn't know what we were setting you up for. Wow, quite a story, quite a fascinating story.
We're looking for another place for a cemetery, right?
I was going to say, do you have any records, cemetery section? No, holy teasing.
Very interesting, that was.
Very. Did you, you do not have anything on Poplar Mountain Conservation Area parking lot, right? You don't have anything you wanted to add to that one, correct?
No.
Okay. Then we'll go to review of the Ford F-550 truck procurement.
Sure. So at annual town meeting, voters approved $125,000 to purchase a new truck. Knowing, knowing that the, what the market is like and the availability is like, I asked Brian if we could get started early on this. And so we went through the state contracting list of VEH 110 and narrowed down only one dealer that is doing the 550 super duties. Contacted them. And we were told, nothing's on site, everything is sold. If we order, Ford's not even accepting orders, I believe it is till October or November of '22, with expected finish date early 2024.
Did it say four?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not shocked, just disappointed.
Within, I think it was the next morning, I got a call from a salesman that we spoke to that they found a 2020 leftover on the lot. So first concern was, with this market, why do you have a two-year-old leftover truck when people are scrambling to get them? Long story short, there was a sale between the two Ford dealers. And at that time, that truck was already in transit at the builders, MHQ. It was purchased to, it was sent over to be built. The build failed. The customer backed out of it. The cabin chassis never went back to the Ford dealer. The Ford dealer changed hands. They didn't even know they owned this truck. The truck building facility finally contacted them and says, look, you know you have a truck sitting over here. So we went down, we looked at the truck. It's a brand-new cabin chassis truck. It's got 120 miles on it. And it would be sold in a minute if the town did not jump on it. They were kind enough to put a hold on the truck, knowing what the market is like and knowing what July 1st is going to bring from many other municipalities. So we went down, we checked the truck out. We specked the truck out while we were there. They have the body in stock, they have the sander in stock, they have the plow in stock. And we may have struck a home run on this. I was a little leery of it at first, but after going down and seeing the truck and speaking to the salesman and the owner of MHQ, the truck will work for us, and it's what we were originally looking for.
So the truck has been at MHQ, and they never actually started the build because of?
Because
The other backed out?
Because the other person backed out. It was a private sale, wasn't, there wasn't even a municipality at the time. Because a lot of these cabin chassis, they get delivered to MHQ and these big truck builders so they don't just clog up the Ford dealership's lots. Because they're going over for automatic builds.
No one's going to go look at them first.
Correct.
You're going to make me reconsider Chief Holt's optimism about. So, no concerns?
I, I have zero concerns. Factory warranty starts at the date of sale, just like a new one. Yes, it's a two-year-old truck, doesn't affect the warranty on it. It starts from the date of the sale, not from the date of manufacturing.
I guess my first question is, anything about it other than it's not a 22 or a 23 differ from what you would have specked and ordered?
No.
So I'm going to put you on the spot anyways. Even though you testify to all of that, I'm going to ask you again.
Sure.
Is there a clear builder ownership slash title to this vehicle?
Yes. A certificate of origin?
Yes. Okay.
Yep.
The title never changed, so it's still new, right?
Correct, it's, it's still new.
Because they never, they never executed, right?
No.
Okay.
No, and they don't do that until after the build is complete anyways, because a truck is sold as a package. Yep, so yeah, never changed ownership to MHQ, to the person that was interested in the build. It would have been a complete sale, just like we do them after, after the build, then it's finally done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions, concerns?
No concerns.
I had questions, but he answered them, so I'm, I'm good.
And this is a very short build time. We could probably see the truck in Irving probably by August.
Be in for the season.
Yeah. And it's $25,000 under budget.
Actually, and not because that's not great, but not having a new quote in front of me, is that significantly less than what a new order would be right now? Obviously, we don't know what it'll be when we actually order, but.
Right, their Ford is not releasing any prices.
Okay.
They are probably thinking a 12% above whatever that you, like this past year's model, a minimum of 12%.
Or maybe my question should be, is it discounted from what it would be if it was a 22?
So they, they gave us a discount, a year discount of $500 because it's a 2020, not 22. I did my parts and questioned, you know, really? And it's supply and demand. If, if Irving doesn't want it for that price, they will re-quote it the same to another municipality, and it'll be gold.
I don't say that to disagree with you. It's not over. It's not, it's not marked up, and in this market, that's probably a good thing.
Well, with the state contract.
With the state contract, right.
There, there is a ceiling price on stuff.
But, yeah.
And in the past, we've always procured this as two separate pieces.
Yes.
Aggregate, this price is very similar to the last time you built the truck, which was about three years ago.
Yes.
I think was the last time we did one. So similar price.
Avoiding inflation?
Well, we're also getting out of the diesels. This truck is not a diesel, we're going back to the gas. It is not central hydraulic, it's electric over hydraulic. So there's a lot of that build, specialty build stuff is not in this one.
That you are trying to avoid because of our
Because of maintenance.
Negative experience, yeah.
Yes. And we're not the only town that's switching back their super duties back to gas also. I did some research on that with, with neighboring towns.
I have no concerns.
I make a motion to award the procurement for the Ford F-550 plow truck to Colonial Ford of Marlboro, Mass., 01752 in the amount of $94,661.10. And to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's quite a find.
Yes.
Can you look for a cruiser?
No. I wasn't mentioning that Chief was $3,000 under budget.
Right.
Glenn's got that beat by quite a bit.
Even in scale, it's quite a bit. I'll jump down to review of tractor procurement.
So again, we, Brian and I reviewed the state contract list. I believe we sent it out to seven or eight different dealers. It's quite hard to come up with multiple John Deere dealers. United Ag and Turf has bought out almost every John Deere supplier, I believe we were told, up the east coast and headed out west. So in our area, it was, it was pretty difficult to find multiple. We did find two, we found some, you know, some off-brands that possibly be able to get on the contract also. So again, following their state contract, the FAC 16, we went through a bunch of lists, dealers. And they had submitted quotes for that. If you'll see, do you have both of them in front of you? Are you able to open them both at the same time?
We have the summary of the two quotes.
Okay.
And then we have the detail.
Okay, so in their quotes, when, when you spec out John Deere, they all have product codes for them. So it was a couple line items that have a different product code, and all that is, is the year. United Ag and Turf tractor, that was a current model year, 2022. The other company, James Rosenkratz and Sons and Company, they're out of New Hampshire. It's the same tractor. The code number is different because it's a new model year tractor, so it would be a 22, 23 model. Other than that, these, these are the same equipment package minus the lights. One did custom lights, and the other did a factory light. But it still had the same light kit in them, the same amount of lights. Same attachments, same everything for it. United Ag and Turf came in, I believe it was about $5,000 less for everything that we're looking for, and again, under budget. I believe we had $30,000, correct? And they came in at $28,045.67. The other company out of Kinston, New Hampshire was $33,187.31. And again, the, the low bidder has almost all the attachments on site between their multiple stores. And we're looking at probably about an August, September delivery date.
They have the tractor itself?
Yes.
And I believe if I followed, some of our existing attachments will fit the new equipment?
They, they will fit, yes. There, there's, because it's under budget, we were getting a little nervous at first. The first price we got, we wouldn't get hardly any attachments with it. So I made sure that our existing attachments do work. So we will have some backup parts for it, you know, attachments also.
Questions or concerns?
What are we going to do with the existing tractor?
I'm up for discussion about that. We could keep it as a backup in case, you know, something big comes up. If we have to have one on this side of town, and the other side of town. If we get into a big storm and, you know, it could be used at the senior center and library. Or if the board wishes, we could surplus it and one less thing to maintain.
What's the current value?
Probably not a lot. I don't know, I can, I can find out. If I had to guess, probably, probably $4,000, maybe somewhere in that area.
Is it something where the vendor would have any trade value and interest?
No vendors have any trade value on really anything right now.
So you, you also said one of the options was cannibalizing it and using it for pots?
No, so we, we have other snowblower, snowblower heads that we have bought in the past.
Yeah.
So we have a, a power broom, a rotary power broom that goes on that, that would fit on the new tractor.
Yeah.
And we have two other snowblower heads that will fit on the new tractor also.
Oh, okay.
So spare attachments?
Yes. Yep.
So if we did keep it as a backup, you have attachments if there was a major storm, was your point, right? To use in multiple locations at the same time?
Yes, at the same time if we needed to, yep.
Other questions, comments?
One more. If we kept it, would that, would that piece of equipment be stored inside?
Yes.
We have room for that inside?
It's a old town barn. We wedge things around. We're running out of space inside, but yes.
Yeah, that's a different big procurement conversation. We're not ready for it today. Just thinking of it, when you said that. Anything else or interested in moving forward or not?
I'll make a motion to procure the John Deere tractor.
There is a clarification in that bill. It said the John Deere, it's a 1025R, not a D25.
Oh, it's a 10.
Sorry, Brian, I didn't catch that in time to let you know.
John Deere 1025R tractor from Unite AG and Turf of Lancaster, Mass., 01523 in the amount of $28,045.67. And to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I believe that wraps up yours for this evening?
It does.
Anything else for us?
Not tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good night, sir. Going back up, review of the Popular Mountain Conservation Area parking lot procurement. You and the team are jumping
I am.
on procurements this year. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to add to that. I have no concerns, but in section 13, under attachments, it lists A through I, if I remember, and it has plans for the Irving Elementary School floor plan.
I will fix that.
So we need to take that out and re-
I'll correct that.
Recorrect the the letters.
I had too many screens open while I was moving things around and borrowing language from other, other documents, but I will make that correction.
Thank you.
He's just testing us. Yeah, and 2-2, your first line didn't indent properly, but that's I had to toss one in, and there's a few of those, I don't know why, but.
There's something with the, the template. Over the years, it just keeps introducing errors, and so I don't know if I have to sit down and redo the template over again. But some of the alignments are wrong. So the high level on this, this is the project that we've been working on for probably about two years. Glenn's measured this out with the Conservation Commission. And Mariah's been working with the Conservation Commission, and we finally got to a point where last year, they felt pretty confident in the proposal for the creation of a new parking area for Poplar Mountain. And submitted the capital request. So this went through the formal budgetary process, the Capitol Committee recommended it. We do have a appropriation from town meeting. And so this is the procurement that will allow us to work with a vendor to create this parking lot. I think I'm recommending a release date of June 29th. Deadline in July.
I don't know if it matters, but your first page calls it a solicitation for quotes, and then thereafter referred to as an invitation for bids.
Correct. So we went, and I will make that correction, solicitation for quotes. So we went, and I will make that correction, solicitation for quotes. It's possible if it's under $50,000 through chapter 3039M. And because I was concerned about the bidding market, I was afraid it was going to get close to the $50,000 and maybe kick us over, and I didn't want to have to redo the project over again. So I was drafting it as an invitation for bids.
Okay.
But after I reviewed that with Glenn, the budgetary number that we used was for a larger parking area. The Conservation Commission refined that parking size down to a smaller footprint. And so as a result, fewer trees are coming down, less material is going to be necessary. And so we think with that change, there should be a contingency within that appropriation that should allow us to do it. So I was going back through and changing invitation for bid back to solicitation for quotes.
Okay.
So I will correct that.
Because we are expecting under 40?
I mean, that's the appropriation, so we can't go beyond there. But, but yes, it feels like that could be a solid reality.
And because this is a DOT road that we're accessing, our curb cuts don't apply, correct?
Mariah has already filed the permit, the curb cut permit for that, and it's all been approved. We have their recommendations and what they want for coverage.
Yeah, I saw that. It showed 24 foot, and I just want that, that's bigger than what we allow, but that's, that's fine because it's not our, our road, correct?
And as we've been 24- I don't have it in front of me. That's at the tip of the radiuses onto Old State Road?
Yes.
That's not the lane. That's the tip of the radiuses for turning each way.
Can you explain that further?
So you pull in your driveway. You have a radius on your driveway. You're not just going straight in? So I believe our road part of it going in and out, it was like 12 or 14 feet is all that's needed. So then you add the six, six foot, say a six foot radius to go out, to turn out of it. So it's at the paved width at the, at on the Old State Road intersection is a 24 feet, not the actual straight driveway going up there.
Okay, so if it was curbed, that's where the curb returns to?
Correct.
Parallel to the road?
Yep.
So the outer opening, I got you.
Correct.
Their layout looks like the 24 max dimension is the actual straight roadway.
Okay.
So just-
Right, and that's the maximum that they will allow.
Right, that doesn't mean that we're putting it in. We can put it in for, you know, whatever spec we do.
I see.
Were you looking for action on this tonight?
If you all are comfortable with us releasing this, I was just looking for approval to release it, but these are all just suggested deadlines. If you wanted to keep it for another meeting or so, we can update and revise all these deadlines.
I'm comfortable with release.
Are you Scott, or would you like another meeting, more time to review before?
No, I think we can release it. I was just double checking, making sure that there was nothing else that jumped out that hasn't been discussed already for-
Well, we always think of addenda, or at least I do, as an option to respond to the contractor or the potential propose, proposee. But it also can be for us to change something. We can issue one if we find something later that we want to amend.
Agreed. So we'll have that saved up, I believe it's-
July 15th. So we'll be able to bring back to you all if there was any questions that stood out as a, as an item that needs further explanation or correction.
Right, and if we read through this again as we're digesting it, or, you know, further on and find something, we can always amend it.
Okay.
So that would be a, if we wish to move forward, it would be a motion as amended?
I'll tell you as release.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the release of the solicitation for quotes for Poplar Mountain Conservation Area Parking Lot Construction Project as amended this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review of the community access to ELOVISION procurement?
It's hard to believe we're coming up at the end of a year. But we are indeed coming up at the end of that. So I would like to begin the procurement process to identify a new, if you all are in support of this, a three-year contract with a organization to offer the professional services for this service. And because it would be an aggregate of a three-year contract, I believe it's going to exceed the $50,000. So that's why I'm drafting it as an invitation for bid.
That makes more sense. I was like, how are we getting over 50 in a year?
Right, you have to add all three years.
I got you.
The only other option would be to do an RFP. If you do it as an RFP, we're going to have to create comparative criteria.
I don't have any concerns with an IFB versus an RFP. Neither of you do?
I have no concern.
No.
Otherwise, it's largely like the procurement you issued last year. I rolled in some of the experiences that we've had from this year, but it's predominantly the same as what you issued last year.
So our current agreement goes through August 31st, 2022?
Correct. Is a three-year term an okay approach, so we don't have to do year by year?
I don't have a concern with three years.
Yeah, I don't either.
None.
Okay. We've been doing it this long, and I don't think we're going to change our minds in 12 months.
I hope not.
I remember some anecdotal conversation about flowing funds through, the whole peg piece without necessarily coming through the town?
Mm-hmm.
Is an option, I believe, there's some-
Yes.
Is that anything that we should be working through if it's of interest during this or in this, before this?
No. The mechanism to do that would be with legal counsel when we go back through the ascertainment process, the next franchise license. And we would actually work a clause into that agreement that would authorize the cable provider to send direct payments right to the town-selected vendor. In that case, I would recommend we would go through a procurement process and ask the voters to authorize the select board to do a 10-year contract.
Okay.
And then that way, the franchise agreement and the professional services agreements would align.
Okay, got it. So we've got a couple more of these three-year agreements. We're in year three of our 10.
Correct.
So.
Two more and then a year maybe?
Just to get us there.
Yep, yep.
You start the ascertainment process two years out, so we'll be starting in 2026.
Right.
The access agreement attachment C says this day, August. Wouldn't it be September 1? We can't enter a new one before the old ones expired, can we? Or wouldn't make sense too, would it?
You can, only because you're going to have an effective start date.
Okay.
Because the contract itself won't start to that effective date.
Agreement made effective later, okay, I got you.
Correct, yep.
Yep.
But, but yes, we could hold off, based on what we get for submissions, you could hold off until then to vote on a contract, yeah.
No, I see the differentiation between term versus agreement date.
Yep.
And this incorporates what we've been doing to date, which is school, select board.
Town meeting.
Regular and town meeting, special town meeting.
Correct.
As the standard.
As the standard.
Got it. Any questions or concerns?
None.
No.
I think I'm suggesting we'd also release this on June 29th, begin that process, and have proposals due at the end of July. So that we give you the month of August to review and make a decision.
Make it so.
Is that a motion?
I'm just making sure that the, under additional programming, that it allows us leeway to increase should we want to do other boards and commissions.
There is some language that talks about not only involving volunteers. Volunteers wanted to become involved in the process and also the potential for community programming once the, once the actual channel's up and running. I know we've been dealing with a delay with Comcast. We haven't really had the capacity or the need or the demand at this point, I should say, to build those services out, but that's already been, that space has sort of been contemplated to work with the vendor as that arose. It was hard to anticipate exactly what the demand and interest from the community would be. But there's at least a call out for having that conversation with the vendor. Trying to balance, it's probably not reasonable to expect that there'd be the live filming of all board and commission meetings, but we've invested in some technology like the Owl where board and commissions could record their videos. And it doesn't mean that we couldn't upload that later on for, for viewing.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, I think there'll be a desire to see additional boards and commissions, at least published, even if it's after the fact, even if it's not live streamed.
Sure.
I'm thinking of planning as, as one that has been, you know, garnered a lot of attention.
Library trustees might be.
Yeah.
Some of the more regular ones or situational, right? Like because of a certain recreation might be one.
And it also doesn't mean that if you do this procurement and throughout year one, some type of large demand or shift in the public or from a specific board or commission is realized, and there is a need or a desire to amend that contract, that doesn't mean you can't sit down with whomever your selected vendor is and work on an appropriate contract amendment to add that service.
You looking for a motion to release? If you all are ready? I think I heard that the two of you were-
Yeah, yes, you did.
Good with it?
Yep. I was rereading the same section because I had brought up the question about it too, but I am-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I make a motion to release the invitation for bid for urban community peg access professional services to be issued June 29th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
FY23 reappointment of board and commission members and related. I know we go through this every year, and I feel like there was some conversation you and I had recently, Brian, that there may be precedent to vote the document as opposed to vote the names and terms and such, or am I wishful?
I think we always want that.
Is that wishful thinking?
I think it's, it's possible to do it that way. You just, you all have never done it that way.
We can go through it if you want, like we normally do. I don't have a problem whichever way you all would like to do it. It's about three pages.
I have no preference.
I know we've talked about it before in the past.
But we have never done it.
We have not, however, to expedite it, I would not be opposed to doing, voting as presented in the document dated June 17th. I would just make sure that before we do that, that we go through and double check and make sure that nothing's missed.
I was just going to say, let me reread the dates and terms.
You read it quickly under the anticipation that we're going to go line by line, but then you look at how long it is, if we just take a minute or two, just to make sure that they're all there. As opposed to 15 minutes of reading. Now, have all of these individuals been contacted to ensure that they are interested? Or is it just?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so every, every board and commission member who was up for reappointment was sent a request to identify whether or not they were seeking reappointment or if they were not interested in continuing. And so this reflects everybody who has submitted a letter asking to be reappointed.
Got it.
With that being said, there are a few folks who have indicated that they were not seeking reappointment. So we do have vacancies on some of these commissions as of July 1st. And so what I will do is put together a list of what those vacancies are, and we'll start the advertising process to the community. I think I have about six or seven vacancies on the boards and commissions.
Under historical, the difference in dates is that one started midterm? Is that right?
Every once in a while, people get off cycle, and I think one of the positions on the historical commission got off cycle, so this was to restore that staggered term.
Yeah, we have not closed- Yeah, we have not closed the Public Works feasibility committee yet.
Not yet.
Mike Brown, Water Department, this is anticipated to be his last year. Because our staff will be fully qualified or will have sufficient, they're licensed, but they don't have full status because of time, I believe, served as, you know, actually chief operators or whatever the appropriate title.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why we're doing it as an annual appointment. Our anticipation is the certification from Mass DEP. But ultimately, that could change if, if they're still in a training status. Got it.
Because they have to serve the time and then, I forget, it's a T and Cs or something and then appeal to DEP to be given.
Full status?
Yeah.
Okay. And that process happens in December, so.
So we will know before?
Correct.
Next June?
Yep.
I know the chief's not here and so maybe you don't know or maybe they just haven't replied. I don't see, oh, I guess it's not true.
You're right, we don't have a response from all of the mutually officers yet.
Okay, I was going to say, I don't see the chiefs, right?
Correct. I don't know if they were, they just didn't return their slips yet? Or if there was some type of anticipated stuff?
Because if I'm correct, Sergeant Bassett is Gil and Sergeant Pruskoff. I believe that's.
It's Northfield.
Apology, I forgot that wrong.
Correct.
It's Northfield.
Yep.
Okay, yep, alright. I have no questions or concerns with the list?
None.
So if you're going to do it as a slate, if we would just commit the slate as presented to the record and I can add the table as it presented into the meeting minutes?
I'll give it a shot and you let me know if it suffice. I make a motion that we reappoint all committee and boards effective July 1st, 2022, as presented in the document dated June 17th, 2022.
And further have the document committed to the record in the meeting minutes?
Just making sure. Because they're all different expiration dates, so I'm not going to.
Yeah, with various term expirations.
I was going to do an effective date as July 1 and then I was looking at term. So, and having the document committed to the record.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will get notification out to everybody and just a reminder, we're going to have the swearing in ceremony next Thursday at this location. That should be Thursday, the June 30th. So we'll send out an invitation to everybody.
I will coordinate with Betsy or Dick, I won't be here.
Okay. Anybody who can't obviously make it to that event will make an appointment with the town clerk's office at their, at their leisure.
What time is that again?
I think it's 6 o'clock. Late refreshments, quick ceremony, and we're going to go over some commonly asked questions about open meeting law, the meeting minute requirements, things of that nature for folks who are either new or have questions about how that, how those requirements pertain to them, so.
I may not be able to attend, I will let you know.
I see you going down from new business. Were you holding off on the graded school?
Nope, thank you.
I just didn't want to jump over it and miss it.
Yeah, no, someone will remind me. Thankfully that I crossed it off, but didn't go to it. This is what I get for jumping around.
It happens.
I will do a better job of aligning the topics by anticipated order in the future. Let's go back to that. Review of the former graded school and library RFP submissions. Thank you for the reminder. So we reissued the RFP after realizing the notification requirement gap. Yeah, advertisement gap. And went through as an expeditions process to reissue and re-notify, advertise, et cetera, as required. And as of the due date, we received one submission from Ober construction. Do you know, has the submission materially changed from their original submission? Is it the exact same document?
I reviewed it, it looks like.
Didn't appear to, it looked like.
It looked like just dates.
Yeah.
Dates resubmitted.
Refreshed.
Yeah, I believe he just re.
And that's what I assumed as well and what I saw too.
Yeah.
I'll just say, for me, we went through the exercise, now there's only a single bidder and, or a single proposal and I was satisfied and interested in their proposal. So I, I would move that we, I would be interested in moving in the same direction as we did last time.
I didn't bother doing another rubric grading since there wasn't any competitors. We graded them and had them as highly advantageous the last time anyways. The bid looked identical to me, so I just figured we'd come and, and make it a formality at this point.
That was my same thought as well.
Yeah.
And then, did you put in here, Brian, because it's not quite an award? It's a move forward with a negotiation of some sort language?
So, yeah, we're not ready for you all to commit to the sale of the property yet. So I need an authorization from the three of you to move forward with Ober Construction as the highly advantageous proposal and allow us to begin the process. We have the DCAM disclosure process that we need to do and that's a 30-day process. And, and then as soon as we're getting close to that, I can bring forward to you a vote for a future meeting. That would be the official authorization to begin the, the sale of the property. And in the meantime, we can work on the development agreement.
And do you require a select board member or wish to have one in, as part of that process, correct?
I think it's helpful.
Okay.
It allows us to get some work done in the meantime and hear from a select board member if there's going to be a concern that, that we should address before we bring it forward to you as a final package. This allows to work with our legal team and, and the intended vendor's legal team.
Do I recall that you had last time, are you still? I'm still fine with that, just know that this summer, I'm here and there, but available remotely if needed, if I'm not in person.
Yeah, we can do it very remote, yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any concerns with that.
Well, I'll give it a shot. I, on this one, give everybody a break. I move that we move forward with the proposal from Ober Construction Company for acquisition redevelopment of the former urban graded school and library rated as highly advantageous and proceed with necessary disclosures and negotiations around finalizing the agreement to proceed.
Second.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So I'll notify the vendor and council and we'll begin, we'll set up a meeting and we'll begin that, that process. Thank you all.
There is an amount that was proposed to, for the purchase of the property?
Right, so as part of the proposals, there was a sealed envelope with the price proposals. So what I'll do is I'll bring those to your next meeting.
Okay.
And, and that way you'll, you'll have both of those.
Obviously not part of the grading, but just to close out the, the full scope to understand what that is. I think he's got. Review of the project master list, project status and closeouts. You're welcome to join us, Mariah, but you don't have to. If we have questions, you're right there. Whichever, whichever. Okay. Were either of you looking for anything more than just kind of advisory to say, here's what's marked complete, we're wrapping and here's what's coming? Or?
I think it's two phases. I think one, we wanted to show you the things that are either nearing completion or that we can mark as complete. And so there's quite a few projects that will be wrapping up in the next month or so. June, July, we should be wrapping up, looks like about eight, nine projects, which feels really good after some of these have carried on for quite some time. We have some projects that we anticipate, either things that you've already committed to or some things that we believe, at least from prior conversations, that are next for prioritization. But I think we want to confirm with you that that is indeed what you intend for us to work on over the, the coming months. We're going to be coming out of a construction phase and moving more into like a planning, engineering phase for a few initiatives over the, probably the fall into the winter with the anticipation for some construction next, next year. We just don't want to over sort of flood next year with a lot of construction projects to manage. So we want to work with you all on how to time some of the engineering and designing work that's, that's starting this year. Is that a fair summary?
So maybe just high level, there's a, there are a fair amount of projects that are already completed, four, five, six there that we have wrapped, like ADA and such. Or, or we're just submitting now to wrap up.
Right.
And then a few that are wrapping up in the next couple of weeks, right?
Correct.
That are in progress but show Q4 completion?
Correct. I think some of the areas that we want to suggest working on, in addition, obviously we have the two bridge projects that we all know that we're starting to work on. You approved those at your last meeting and the Bridge Street wall replacement and reconstruction. So those are the three construction projects that we have on, on deck for the next year or so. I think we've been talking in-house about reviewing some of our other plans. Obviously ADA is the most recent one that we finished, but going back through those plans, identifying the action items and identifying things that are ready for action in the coming year and things that may require consideration for a capital improvement of some sort and get those at least on everybody's radar for future planning and identification of priorities. And then there's been some regulatory and bylaw related work that's sort of been on the back burner for the, the last few months to year. And it may be time to, to give those some attention. So obviously the general code project is something that has been started, but we really need to put some concerted effort behind and, and move that to completion. The water use regs, the sewer regs, traffic regulations. We've talked about working on the, the pursuit of a new cemetery and working on a view of the cemetery regulations. So it may be an opportunity to work on some of those items as we are working on the engineering for the, the future projects.
So I think just a note, the Church Street Bridge construction is funded now, right? In theory, we could probably mark that as funded. We're, we're looking at better options, but it is technically funded, right? So there is, what, not too many in summer 23 at this point that are queued up?
Yeah, I think that was kind of what we were moving towards is we had this big push through the spring and now into the summer. And we have a few of the larger construction projects that we're planning. But usually we kind of have, or I think what we would aim to have is a few large projects going and a few kind of medium projects going. That hasn't always been the case, but I think that's the goal. So what are those kind of more smaller, medium projects that we can fill in around those larger projects? And what are the priorities for those?
Probably the first one is for any that can start in FY23, it's funding, right? So at least that's the way I look at it. And some of the ones on here, I do think we now have funding from annual, like the watch guard body camera system replacement, which we should be able to do in FY23, I think.
Okay.
I think that's primarily going to be a vendor beyond the procurement and, you know, and scheduling with Chief Holst and things like that. So I think that should fit, if you both agree, no problem in FY23.
Right.
If anything, we probably should get the procurement going because it's supply chain, right? Probably look to Rec to see if, and, you know, work with Glenn on whether or not next summer for Zelensky for the funded ADA improvements, right? Because there's some queued up for this summer, right?
Correct.
For the playgrounds and things like that, yep. And so does that fit next year into his schedule and to Rec's schedule? Being that it's, looks like it's funded. Town Hall RFQ versus Town Hall feasibility, that's the RFQ for the feasibility engineer, design team, whatever, to help us with that?
You'd already drafted it with Andrea?
Right. But that's how those two.
Correct.
Integrate with each other. Okay, thank you.
Once the RFQ is over, we can check that off and begin the design process.
It's to fund the people to help us with that, right? Or to, to get the proposal forward, okay.
I think one of the big unknowns going forward is going to be how much and what kind of work we're doing on the IP mill. Obviously, if we are managing a large demolition project, that's much different than writing another RFP or, you know, there's, I think we don't really know what that entails. And so that's a big question mark going forward. Another thing that kind of falls in with that is senior housing and the parcel behind here. I think our hope was that once IP mill was out of our hands, that we could then focus on that and it would be consecutive. But if it looks like IP mill is around to stay a little while, then maybe we, you know, unsurface that again and, and start thinking, okay, we've learned this from the RFPs we've done and since the last time we released the senior housing one. Are there changes that we can make? Do we need to request more funding to do more studies or anything? Kind of rethinking how we've done that project in the past and then looking at who might be interested in the area and kind of what their timelines might be and figuring out if we need to release another RFP when that is.
Yeah, it's not on here, but there's going to be work around that. I mean, we're planning to try to schedule a site visit and such in July or sometime during the summer with a bunch of groups and come back and have some discussion, you know, maybe on a Saturday about, like I think that's what we discussed the last meeting about.
Yeah, I think the hope was.
Where do we go?
To have that done by the end of summer.
The site visit?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and a discussion, at least.
At least a discussion.
Yeah, and a discussion, at least, starting to maybe hone in on a direction.
It's been probably a year since the Senior Housing Committee met, obviously during COVID and with the pause on the project, we have not met. And I think getting the group together to talk about where we are and aligning that with a site visit of a completed project or a project that's about to open up for housing.
I think you were talking about the IP mill site visit.
Oh, okay.
There was another, I don't know if you all are aware, I know you were, I asked you about your availability, Mr. Bembry, but the Senior Housing Committee is looking at doing a site visit down to Sunderland. And so I think that will be the first time you guys have met really, you know, in quite a while. And so it'll be good to have everyone together and I think kind of see a completed project and reassess our goals, where we're at, what people are interested in, and hopefully plan some meetings after that to figure out how we go forward.
And then to your question about the IP mill, yes, we are ready, I think this week, to send a request to all the boards and commissions that we identified to ask if they could help us identify a date for a site visit and then a follow-up date for a joint meeting with all of you.
I think we did talk about considering it the same day on a Saturday.
Ideally, if we can do it.
Yeah.
The other.
I was gonna say around senior housing, I guess for me, you know, obviously you're on the committee, but maybe my question to that team would be what, what is different about how we might go at it again that we think would be more successful, right? Like, just kind of, not saying we shouldn't try, we could try the same thing again, we've done it before, but ideally, if we've identified some things that make it more advantageous or likely to get response or just things we've learned, like you said, from our other RFPs since.
Right.
Just slightly, just, you know, curiosity about what is that, but also, you know, how, how do we feel about success?
Yeah.
It was a big project.
One of the things I had proposed to Brian was, right now, we have a lot of plans that have action items that get buried in a notebook somewhere. And if it would be helpful to have part of other tabs in the project master list or perhaps a separate spreadsheet that is a tab for each plan and the action items associated with it that then we can link to, okay, like, you know, whatever, the master plan. We had these goals to get done in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years. What have we accomplished and the ones that we haven't accomplished, where do they fit in on our master list in terms of? They might not be a discrete project, but the goals that we're hoping to achieve, how do those align with the specific projects that we're working on? And maybe use that, using that information, those tasks to kind of inform as you're all looking out, you know, the next fiscal year, the next two fiscal years. Well, we've addressed these goals with the master plan, we still have these outstanding items on the ADA checklist. Like, what can we knock off next?
I think it's good because I think you said it and you've said it and I've heard it and I'm thinking of culverts. There's a whole list of, you said action items and I, you know, ADA, master plan, culverts. I mean, there's so many of them where we've done a lot of work to get some sort of list. That was discreet of things that would continue to round out or close out or, you know, bring us to a level that we were looking for. Where are all those lists? Hypothetically. But yeah, I think that's a really good one and that's potentially a great list to work from in some cases for smaller tasks or projects that we can fit in around all the big ones, right?
Okay, I can get to work assembling that then.
Yeah. Visualizing it, I don't have anything in my head on how that should be, if either of you do, but just somehow that we can reference it and.
No, I think your suggestion of having background tabs that are just hyperlinked is fine.
Okay.
I noticed the fire station number two bay heaters and weatherization says grant. We're going to try for one or we have one?
It was intended to try for one.
Okay. Software conversion for licensing payment applications budget?
Say it again?
That the the unfunded but in progress software conversion for licensing payment application and bud, budget?
Yeah, I think that got cut off.
Yep. No, is that the licensing software upgrade or is that budgeting software?
I think we would move the budgeting to the accounting software so that would become part of the project further down.
With the treasurer and accountant, right?
Okay.
Okay. That's where I got a little confused. So new licensing software, which is in progress to get proposals for?
Correct.
And payments, if we can take them as part of that, is that what payment application is?
That would be ideal.
Okay. Just, I understood.
I think whatever we can do to make the application process smoother for our license holders and to improve the record retention, specifically the history of each of our licensees, I think is in the town's business interest as well as the applicants. And so I would be looking for a system that does all of that. If we couldn't find everything, we may have to scale back. So I think we're going to craft this as an RFP and try to identify the must haves and what the preferences are. And then we'll rank them from not advantageous to highly advantageous to be my preference. And I think similarly, when we get down to the accounting software, we do something similar where we have the must haves and then what are the desired preferences and have a similar comparative criteria grid.
Farley wastewater system, I feel like I saw some stuff about that and what was the driver behind it? I'm just forgetting what started that discussion or where that's coming from.
It is a request from the neighbors.
Okay.
That it is considered. And I think the document that you would have seen is from a few months ago where we have a engineering proposal from Time Bond that just talks out what it would look like to engage them for an exploratory design and in opinion of probable cost on expanding the sewer collection system for POTW number three.
And this is to serve the few unserved.
Correct. You have the residential streets off of Route 2 are serviced by POTW number three, except for Wheelock Street. So it would be adding conceptually Wheelock Street and the houses below Wheelock Street on Route 2. And that would require a pump station to get up to the height of Bridge Street.
Gravity feed, yeah.
And then a gravity feed down Route 2 because the houses along Route 2 are not connected to the current system.
On either side, none of the houses on Route 2, right?
Correct. Correct. I would recommend if you are, and I'm not saying that you all have committed to this project, I want to be clear about that. This is obviously something that you all haven't talked about. If this is something that there was support for, there was town interest, I would say that this is something that we should be exploring before the state commits to any type of work in the Farley area. Because once they do that, you have a five-year moratorium and you can't do any other cutting of the pavement.
Yeah, I was just looking at two of the items on there that are noted, both being Route 2 Irving Center and Route 2 Farley improvements. And, you know, of course, a lot of that has to do with the SIP and, you know, funding and getting it on the docket at the state level.
And it may be something where even if the town's not in the position to commit to something, it may be somewhere in the scope of the project that the town can work with, whatever vendor Mastat has selected. We did something similar when we worked out here on Northfield Road where you just ask them to put pipe in the ground.
Right.
I was gonna say, could we do that? If we, if we consider this and decide we're interested, could we just do that first? Because it was highly advantageous in, at the time in cost, that was.
If they're already there opening the road.
Right. To just have them put pipe in and then, if we were considering this as a potential future project and then it's ready and it's.
It gives you all the options in the future.
Potentially lesser upfront for that portion of the project. Anyway, next.
To piggyback on a project that's already happening, pennies on the dollar.
The road's open.
Yeah. Right. And you don't have to find another contractor to mobilize, you don't have to have them coordinate with another. So it simplifies a lot of, a lot of steps.
Anything on here that jumps out to anyone right now that we haven't talked about? Otherwise, I'm thinking we probably want to digest this a little bit, think about what's there, what else might be priority. Maybe come back with, you know, top three or top five that each of us sees as something we might want to try to allocate time. You know, based on what I'm seeing here, I'm thinking we're talking more of winter, spring, summer, kind of beginning to ramp up and head toward, right? An investment of resources towards whatever that step in the project is.
Yeah.
Knowing there may be some fall prep, which depending on what we're choosing, right, to move toward. Does that make sense to both of you?
It does.
It does.
And is there anything on, not on the list that, you know, should be?
Right.
Or, I mean, okay, let me rephrase that. Yeah, I was gonna say, let me rephrase that. There's always lots of things we'd like to put on the list. Any other really high importance or priority or critical things that we don't see on here? Is, did I miss Swamp Road?
It is on page two.
It's down there.
It's down there, okay.
There's design and permitting, there's bridge construction.
We can probably. That is really a.
We can update that one to be started.
It's starting, right? It's starting this summer or this fall, so.
Right, the design and permitting has been funded, so we can start there.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose track of some of those big ones that are taking up time and resources when we're looking at what else can we do.
Yeah, and I think one thing that Brian and I have learned through when we had all those big projects going was there's, like, this seems kind of obvious, but like different types of projects take different time intervals. Like procurement might take, Brian, like, you know, two weeks of intense writing and proofreading and all of that stuff, but then it's just out. And then some of these like more, you know, management of construction projects are a few hours a week for a year. And so I've been trying to kind of process like, how many two-hour-a-weeks-for-a-whole-year projects can we handle at once? And how many kind of sprints can we handle at once or back-to-back? And so I don't know if it'll help you all as you're looking through that when you're thinking about projects, not just this project is going to take two years to happen, but what is the intensity of the time that will be required?
Well, I just don't feel like more than maybe too large is feasible for a department. And then I don't know that more than, I don't know, four, five is feasible for the administration, the team, you know, overall. Because it takes resources from both of you and many others for all of the big projects. Even two sounds like a lot and we might have an emergency one and I'm not going to wood, we won't, but I think we should.
Yeah.
Prepare for the bandwidth to do that.
That's exactly where I was going with that is, you know, it'd be nice to, I could sit here and look at all these and say, I think we should do this one or that one, but not knowing the bandwidth that it's going to take from the department or the administration side to make sure that they happen. It's just arbitrary of me just saying, you know, I want to see these projects and make it so. It doesn't really work that way. We don't have the bandwidth to make it happen. So I really would like to know, you know, the nuance. So if we come back with a few of them and see how those all intertwine to make sure that they can actually be done.
Yeah.
I think it's been thinking, what about going to kind of the department head or group that is kind of maybe the
The driver behind it.
The driver or the owner of the bulk of the work and saying, you know, okay, and I'm just going to pick on Glenn and Highway, you know, here's a list of projects that you don't have planned yet that are somewhere down the road. You know, with what you have planned for FY23 and then into, you know, some of this you know is coming into FY24. What would you say you can, you know, handle? Like, and what do you consider, like, is this a big project or do you already have a big project? And we're only looking, and maybe really try to tone that with, we're not looking for you to take on more. We're looking for a really fair assessment of, I can really do one. If we have another one that we need to do a little bit on, that's okay, but anything, you know, whatever that is, right? Just understanding that.
And I was, I had Highway in mind as well. I was looking at something like the Homes, Brigs, Wells, Stormwater Management versus Flag Hill resurfacing, you know. So the varying, like, what do those entail and how much time would that take? And what I may look at is Flag Hill's not a big road and, you know, but how much behind-the-scenes time to make a project like that happen? What's the bandwidth that we have? I don't know all those pieces. I know from the time that the paver shows up to grind it, resurface it, pave it, we're talking, you know, three days, tops, you know, maybe two. They're in and out, but there's a lot that goes in behind that. I want to make sure that if I'm presenting that as an option, that it's something that the department and the town has the bandwidth to take on.
If we can find some way to just really high-level rating, like this is a one-a-year project, this is a, I can do two-a-year project and this is a, I don't know, this is a four because, well, we can fit four of these in throughout years, you know, because they're, whatever, the scale of you know, resource demand, I don't know what that looks like, but just that idea of of saying, you can pick one, one, two twos and a three and we're okay, you know? Don't give me more than five, I can do a total of five. And no more than one, one, you know, whatever.
Would it be helpful for Brian and I, I mean, I think, you know, Highway is, like you said, kind of easy to pick on just because there's so many projects that are involving them. But I think especially because of that, would it be helpful for Brian and I to sit down with Glenn and just go through the ones that are currently on the list and have that discussion? So that the next time you're all talking about it, we can say, you know, Glenn thinks that his team can handle, you know, maybe these two projects at once and this one next year or something?
Yeah, and I also, you sort of said it like in a little joking elementary way, but I like the rating system of like, you know, if we can handle four as a town, four or five large projects, this one would categorize itself as a 25% project. You know, I could handle four of those, which would be the same time commitment as one larger one, you know? So, you know, if we're looking at two large projects in town and we don't have one that's funded and we can't do it, but we have four small ones that would take the same equivalent of bandwidth, knowing that, you know, what, how they categorize.
Like a full-time equivalent employee.
Yeah. You know, basically like an FTE, if we can say we want four projects a year, what's the FTE on this project?
An FTE, full department equivalent.
There you go.
How many FDEs can you, we can only go to one now. I agree with you though, and I don't want to get complex about it, but just some basic criteria, okay? This is the number one project and that I can only do one of those and whatever, right?
Yep.
Something, maybe brainstorm with the departments or something, you know, especially those who take on a lot of that, yourselves included, right? Because we can have departments that they can take on five number one projects, but is that 150% of what two of you can help support too, right? And I know, you know, like Jennifer's helping with supporting procurement and things like that, so that helps spread the bandwidth. But let's not just put it at 110% again because we have additional support, so. Somehow maybe we visualize that, maybe there's a little prioritization too, you know? And I know we talk about this in the capital side of it and funding, but, you know, if we pick on Highway, because there's a lot there, right? You can't do 10 in a year and you can't do five of them in five years potentially because they're too big. So what does that look like? Is there a prioritization that they would recommend, department head would recommend based on, you know? Or Rec may prioritize what they'd like to see done? How does that align with what the departments who might manage that work, Highway or others that, you know, grant writing, you know, things like that that would support it, so.
Yeah, I think that Rec in particular, on their strategic plan, they had, you know, getting a grant writer to redo Vets Field eventually. And that is, that would be a huge project when we start it. But it has a lot of lead time to write a part grant application, wait and see if you get it and then start planning. So like, that's one of those projects that is, you know, kind of a question mark of, once we had the capacity or Rec feels like it's time to really start that, it's going to be a really long project and it's going to be like really intense at some points and a lot of waiting at other parts. And I think there's a lot of projects that are like that where, you know, maybe you're in the design phase and then it's like all of a sudden you're bidding and then nothing and yeah, so.
Well, I think we might have to queue a few of those up. And if they're contingent upon grants, maybe be strategic about when we apply for them, knowing we're going to flip which year we do them. If we get the grant that year, then we'll apply for the other one right away and for the following year or whatever. We're just kind of trying to figure out what does that strategy look like?
Yeah. Well, thank you all.
Yeah, no, I, I just think this is good. I mean, we've talked about it, there's a lot here. Maybe the only other thing, and you may have already done it, I know a lot of it's on here, is just circling back to the annual town meeting. You know, what capital, what capital had for requests and what was funded and making sure that any larger projects. capital had for requests and what was funded and making sure that any larger projects are here in terms of funded. And then even the things that weren't funded that were requested, you know, are they on here as question marks, right?
I can double check and make sure.
Because that's kind of maybe, again, one of those lists that was started?
Yeah.
You know, make sure it's in the whole list. Anything else that either of you would like at this point with this?
Nope.
Good with it for now?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So maybe in, you know, a month or so, I don't know, or give us some feedback when, you know, you've got some more data from departments or something that would help us too. And we can talk through whatever we might have identified as things we think are important.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Reserve fund transfer requests. Before I go there, closeouts, is there any other closeout type stuff you need from us as the fiscal year is ending?
Yes. We're actively watching every department and grouping to see how we're coming in, working online on transfers and looking at where we may need to use the reserve fund. So the requests in front of you today are to rescind some previous votes, we weren't able to do the projects in the fiscal year, but we may have a use for that reserve fund funding for some unanticipated costs that came up at the end. So the first step was to ask you if you'd be willing to reverse those earlier requests that you had approved. And then as I work with Debbie and the department heads to identify the few things that have come up, prepare a list of reserve fund requests for you and the FinCom to consider. And we have until July 15th to do that work. We're right on the last two weeks of closing out our fiscal year and things overall are in good shape, but there may be a budget or two where things came in tighter. Notably, the wastewater department is one where we had a lot of, you had the Route Two issue, you had three construction projects in that department and you also had the generator issue where that failed and we had to do the replacement. So there was just a flurry of activity that was not planned. And so there were some cost overruns that we may have to, to look at, reserve fund transfer.
So those will come in our next meeting, because it'll be the last week or so before-
Correct.
Okay. It's closed out even though it's past July 1st?
Correct, you have till July 15th.
15th, yeah, okay. So the reserve fund requests here is to rescind two requests, one from March of this year around the accounting software because we didn't necessarily get everything we needed from the vendor to move forward and execute rapidly and then also the idea of scoping it more thoroughly and going out for RFP.
You never want to change the financial software in the middle of a process, so there's never a good moment to do this. You're either right up against the end of the calendar year in W2s and the Affordable Care Act filings, so the treasurer's office is busy, or you're right up against the end of the fiscal year, so the accounting office is very busy. So we have these windows where we can do it and we thought we were right in between a window, we thought we had an upgrade with our existing vendor. And just as we thought we were ready to move forward, there were some things that we asked for, some clarification on processes, some vendor checks, references of other clients, and they couldn't provide us with the information we need. So that made us pause and I think once you're nervous about pulling, pulling the lever and allowing yourself to go forward on something like that, it's probably a good moment to stop and say, let's re-approach the entire procurement. So yeah, we would like to revisit it.
Questions on that one?
No.
And the second one was the access control system for the police department. And I know we identified this as a key piece of our, you know, kind of cyber security strategy as well as, you know, aging systems, all those things. That being said, it's functional, fully functional and with everything else that's been going on, plus maybe some, some things that we would like better than what we've had in our last installation, that's brought us to, you know, reconsidering going out for, you know, proposals, we're not there yet, so. And we've been monitoring what, for example, a neighboring police department has been doing for a solution because they are going through something like that right now and they've been spending months, I mean, I think it was six months ago, nine months ago when we started hearing they were close to putting it in and I think they finally did this week, last week. So they take a while even though they sound like they shouldn't. And then I'm sure supply these days has made it harder. So we will continue to refine the scoping and then probably look at putting it in as a 23, a 20, 24 capital project most likely and scoping it out in late 23 with probably getting it ready.
Right.
Maybe especially if we're there and it makes sense, but right now we're managing.
Correct.
Questions on either? We're good, comfortable rescinding them?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion that we rescind our reserve fund transfer requests dated March 14th, 2022 in the amount of $23,400 and dated June 11th, 2021 in the amount of $42,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And then as long as I didn't skip anything else, the last two items on our list are first reads of policies. First one is a sexual harassment prevention policy. So the policy says it's a prevention policy, the topic says policy, assuming they're the same.
It's exactly the same, I just-
I don't know which one should, whether we should have prevention in there, so I just-
I will add that for next week.
And the second one is protected class harassment policy.
Correct.
So these are first reads, so unless either of you have anything to add, we'll just plan to discuss more at our next meeting and then go from there. Okay. I only have one, why is there a footnote on the title of the second policy?
Just to make it clear that sexual harassment prevention policy is a standalone policy.
There it is, I looked for it, I looked for it on the last page for some reason, I see the footnote now, okay.
It threw me off.
Yep, got it. Okay. All righty, anything else? Okay, we are here tomorrow night at 6:30. Just more detailed discussions around police staffing, et cetera.
Yep.
Okay. With that, make a motion to adjourn at 8:49 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.